All right, hello everyone. This is June 20th, 6 o'clock. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid fashion. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and livestreamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda or on the second page of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate on when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant to the extent that we are in a hybrid situation. All votes will be taken at this meeting by roll call. Otherwise, it will be voice vote. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at the discretion of the chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide their full name and address for public record. For the public record, please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. The meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. All right, let's do a quick roll call.
Jack Creighton here.
Ellen Moore present.
Jeanne Healy-Dippel here. All right, all are invited to join the board in the Pledge of Allegiance if you wish to participate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So the first agenda item is an executive session exemption number six to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. The board will discuss a potential property acquisition and the chair so declares. This fits with an exemption six that I just read. So right now, we are going to switch to executive session and we will resume public comment at 7 o'clock. Okay, I would invite...
I move we move into executive session.
My second.
All those in favor? Oh, I need to do roll call, I think. Okay.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Moore, aye.
Jeanne Healy-Dippel, aye. So we will return at 7 o'clock for the public meeting. Thank you.
And whereas Paul's actions both demonstrated his emergency first aid skills, learned as a scout and also his fidelity to the scout motto, be prepared, and to the scout oath which reads in part, "To help other people at all times." Now therefore be it resolved that the select board acknowledge with sincere appreciation the service scout Paul Chapman provided to his fellow resident of Cohasset. So before we vote on this, I just wanted to open this up for discussion to any of my fellow board members if you'd like.
Paul, otherwise known as PJ, has now graduated to be Sir Paul. I was not surprised. I have seen Paul sailing. He's very skilled. He's very fast. He was actually put aboard a sailboat that I was, I can't really say sailing, and he sailed me back. So I think that's commendable and Paul, congratulations. Well done. And this is just what, and I think it's also a tribute to the scouts because the scouts provide the type of training that allows young kids to grow into young men and young women. Congratulations.
So Paul, congratulations. And I would like to personally thank you because the citizen you attended to was my husband. And he has no recollection of what happened. And I think your speedy action, I understand it was quite a lot of blood, but I understand your speedy action really, really helped him. And I wanted to thank you for that.
And as the mother of a younger scout, I would say you provide a great example for all the younger kids. So thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to say anything before we vote? All right. All right. I would entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we issue this commendation to Paul Chapman.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll sign up for you. Is there anything you'd like to say? No? Okay.
Make you feel more ready if it happened again. Not with my husband, but with somebody else maybe. Was it your first time handling a first aid situation like that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And did you just instinctively, you just knew what to do?
And then I heard that you went back to recycling, like in a pretty seamless way. So impressive. So this is Peter. Thank you again.
I think we should stand in everybody's room.
Well, another positive note, thank you. We are now going to move into new employee introductions. So, welcome. Actually, let me get Mr. Senior here. You're on. You're on.
We have four new employees with us, one virtually just in and three in person. That's correct. We have, so these are folks who've been, we just haven't had to get them in. So it's exciting to welcome them officially. Starting, so I will start with Alice. Alice Bella Fontaine, am I saying her name right?
You can feel free to come up.
You can come up. Alice is our new payroll benefit specialist. She joined us from Norwell. She has 15 years of payroll experience, four on the municipal side. She's been a great addition. She's a lifelong resident of Cohasset as an extra bonus. Graduated Magna Compliment for Northeastern. She's a big lover of cats and rabbits and currently owns one of each.
Oh, very nice.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Welcome. Welcome to Cohasset.
We have, it's Jake, but I don't remember people call you that. So it's Jake, yes, Jake Ellis. Jake is our assistant director of facilities. You may have seen him around the building. Jake was a manager in the compressor business. And in addition to his technical knowledge of machinery, he did a lot of experience, had a lot of experience in the US Coast Guard. He was everything from a lead fireman to a boarding officer. During one of his missions, his boat was chased by pirates off the coast of Somalia.
Oh wow.
And he was standing by a mayonette.
Wow. You were standing by his feet.
Oh yeah, scars right here. So he's, so Cohasset is nothing, okay?
Yeah.
He piloted, he piloted.
Wait and see. Wait and see.
He's used to it.
I'm ready to go.
Jake is also the commander of the American Leisure Post in Whitman.
Oh, great. Yeah, good. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you for coming out.
We have Jackie Malley, who's on our screen tonight. She's our new assistant assessor. Hello, Jackie. She comes from Situate, which is the assessing specialist and the assessor senior clerk. She was there for five years. She's also worked as a merchandiser, an insurance underwriter. She lives in Situate. Her first language is Spanish. Her son is going to his senior year at Harvard where he's the goalie for the Harvard hockey team. So, welcome, Jackie.
Nice. Welcome.
And then we have Patty Smith. Patty is the assistant services assistant for elder affairs. She has been a volunteer van driver for a long time. So she is a familiar face around elder affairs. It's very exciting to have her foot from volunteered to regular paid employee. She's now kind of supporting transportation and programming needs. She was an executive recruiter for 23 years as a worker in two different firms. Now she's going to be a volunteer recruiter. In addition to her volunteer services at the senior center, she's volunteered for Wellspring, Social Service League, Hal's Timers Association, great addition to elder affairs, and she convinced 12 friends into climbing Machu Picchu with her for a milestone birthday. So she convinced people to climb Machu Picchu. She convinced people to do anything in elder affairs. It's very exciting to have her. Welcome, Patty.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm welcome. Thank you.
Welcome, Patty. You are well known in the recruiting business.
Yes, well. Thanks.
So these are, these are our four, four of our new employees. We have more coming. So again, thank you all for joining us tonight and welcome to Cohasset. Well.
Thank you.
Your new role in Cohasset.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You all have an outing to stay for?
Yes.
No excuses. If you decided you wanted to stay, we probably have questions.
Oh, yes.
You stay.
Yeah, it's up next. All right. So speaking of fireworks, we are on to licenses, permits, and events. Let's do the fireworks first. Craig McClellan may be dialing in. I'm not sure.
Craig, Chief Quigley.
Perfect.
Hi there.
Hi, Chief. Hi. Hi, Craig.
Hi.
All right. So gentlemen, you are on if you want to give us an update on the fireworks and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, as the select board of course knows, at its last meeting, it preliminarily approved using the overtime fund to pay for police and fire costs associated with the fireworks event pending successful fundraising. So I'm happy to repeat, report, excuse me, that in the time that has elapsed in the last meeting and now, we have successfully raised enough money to pay for the deficiency in the, between the credit for the fireworks that we had and the cost of the show. Four buses to run transportation loops from the high school in Sandy Beach and back, trash cleanup after the event, and four portable toilets to increase our facilities. And then there were two, I think two, possibly three, you know, part-time Sandy Beach staff requested by the Sandy Beach Association. So the funds that we have raised will pay for all of that. So I would hope that the select board will formally approve the event so that we can move forward with it. I'll let obviously Chief Quigley speak to all the logistics that he has been in charge of planning. This event, I would note, would absolutely not be possible, presuming that the select board may formally approve this.
Craig has frozen, but I have a feeling it was to sing your praises, Chief Quigley. So if you'd like to proceed with.
All right. Thank you. So the, everything Craig said is falling into place. The security plan is a work in progress. You know, we have personnel and we were just, you know, making tweaks to it every, every day. But you know, there'll be some road closures. We'll advertise that widely and you know, hopefully, you know, it'll be a successful event. We'll keep an eye on the weather. You know, Chris, Chief Darkree, Michelle, and a few others met the other day and you know, I think it'll be a nice event.
So thank you, Chief. We appreciate that and all the help too that you've provided. Clearly based on the fact that the community raised the money in one week shows that this is going to be a popular event. One question that I know I've gotten a lot is how to access the fireworks and parking or the lack thereof, road closures. Do you have any sense that you could provide, including for those curious about how to access them? What the plan may be, appreciating it could be subject to change as things evolve.
Sure. It's going to be very similar to the trap on traffic. We're going to limit, we're going to limit to the extreme traffic on Atlantic Ave between Beach Street and Nichols Road. So that will be closed to traffic. We can't have, we don't want, you know, pedestrians bingling with traffic. There's just not a lot of room there for both. There'll be no parking for the most part at Sandy Beach. And we're going to encourage people to either walk or take the shuttle buses from the high school to the event.
Okay. Okay, great. And the timing, I assume it's going to be around dusk on July 2nd? Is that the plan?
Yeah, around 9:50. We're going to start buttoning things down around 7:00, 7:15, and we're looking for the beginning of the display around 9:15, 9:30.
9:15, 9:30.
And again, we'll have solid times in the final plan. Once, once it's complete, we're just incorporating the permits that we've received. We've got the marine permit. We'll get the state permit. And we're just waiting for fireworks company to hand over the final permit from the fire department, which Chris and I were assured is imminent today.
Okay. Great. Any questions?
No.
I move that we approve the fireworks.
A second.
All right. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you again, Mr. McClellan and Chief Quigley. We look forward to fireworks.
Should be a fun event. I'm getting an unstable connection. I don't know if you can hear me, but thank you. I keep on getting bumped off.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you again, Craig.
Take care, guys.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. So let's go back to the filming request. The Dark Echoes Paranormal Series Town Hall. Mr. Senior, do you want to provide any background on this paranormal series that?
Oh, we do have a gentle.
Oh, great. Oh, perfect. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ryan, would you like to provide us with a brief overview? Oh, you're on mute, Mr. Ryan. Yes, yep.
So we started a seven series called Dark Echoes. It's going to be featured on Amazon Prime next year. And we, we wanted to go back to Cohasset Town Hall where it all started for us because we investigated that place in 2007. We thought it would be a great episode for season one. We've already filmed five episodes. We have three more, and we would love to make Cohasset one of the episodes for the show.
Okay. Okay. And Mr. Senior, any concerns with this in terms of the filming with respect to ongoing town hall activities?
I think so. I mean, because you're planning, you're looking to do it this weekend, it looks like, right on Saturday?
We can abide by whatever's good for you guys. If you want us to come this week, you can do that. If you want us to pick a weekend, we can do that as well. We also have a $2 million insurance policy that you guys are fully covered. We're fully covered.
So we can work with you on the data. We do have the drama, there's a drama. We do have the drama, there's a drama rehearsal for us, a production. It's, they're rehearsing during the week. So why don't you just come back to my office and we can confirm a specific time. How long would you be on site?
What was that?
How long would you be on site?
We would arrive, it takes about two hours to get there. We'd arrive by noon. If anybody's doing any interviews, we interview from 1:00 till 3:00. And then from 3:00, we, we break down and we get ready for the medium to arrive on location. And then she does her walkthrough and then we do the intro, the sit-down, and then we do the investigation from night at night to probably like 3:00 in the morning. So everything's all done in one day.
Okay.
Do we get, so Town get paid?
We, we're not getting paid to do this. So there's no must involve. We're, we're doing this out of our own pocket.
I'll just say, I was there in 2007 when you did the first, when you did it the first time at the Town Hall.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do you remember Pat Martin?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we were all there that night. It was, it was kind of eerie. It was quite late. We hung around till like 11, 12, and then everything started at that point.
Okay. All right. Any mo, I'd invite a motion.
Anyone feel inclined? I'll move to accept the filming request from Dark Echoes for the paranormal series at Cohasset Town Hall. Date to be determined with Town Manager.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, good luck with your movie series and maybe you'll find a ghost.
Yeah. We looked back because if you remember, we captured the up on the, up on the second floor, the door closing on its own.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think it's gotten eerier over the last.
Few more dead bodies.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are on to an extension of COVID outdoors for Lenny's Hideaway. Mr. Senior, is there anyone from Lenny's on, Justin? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Burke, how are you?
Hello, I'm fine, thank you. Good evening.
All right. Good evening. You want to give us a very brief description of what you are interested in?
Yes, we're just going to try to continue for this, this summer, what we've been doing the past couple of years, which is with the seating outside there. It's been pretty well received and just the fact that we have the opportunity to, again, we'd like to take advantage of that.
Okay. Any comments from my fellow board members?
Great idea. I, I move we grant the extension.
Any discussion?
I just, thank you for the diagram, but I'm just, where is this in relation to the steps coming up from the Town Parking Lot?
Well, you, you could take the steps up and this is just beyond the entryway to Lenny's Hideaway. It's in that little court that was a few years ago, just like recessed.
Oh, okay.
Filled it in with the pebbles and now it's, it's right where the tables are. They've been there for a couple of years.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. So I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any, any, oh, Mr. Chief Quigley has raised his hand.
I, I'd just like the opportunity to ask you, is alcohol going to be served out of that shed that was there? Are you bringing the shed back?
No, the shed is gone.
Okay. And will the alcohol be served outside?
We'll, we'll have a service bar there with some wine and, and some alcohol, like, like we've done in the past. It'll, it'll be exactly like we've done the past two years.
All right. I, I mean, this, this.
But no shed.
Footprint of, I mean, this, I, I think this has to be an extension of the premises through the ABC. Because the COVID rules are out now. So I want to make sure that a proper extension of the premises has been filed. And I also want to check, are you living in state now?
We go back and forth between state and other areas. And with regards to the COVID, they have extended that for just this one more year. So the ABC, it's cleared with the ABCC and we get to utilize the same footprint as we've been doing the past couple of years.
Okay. And I'm, and is it, who's the manager of record now?
It's the same, it's the same as before Sean Cronin.
Okay. There, there was an issue that we had no manager of record and you guys weren't in state anymore. So I, I have some concerns about this.
Yeah, that was an issue quite a while ago and we, we took care of that. And he's gone through the state and he's, he's certified manager of record for quite a while now.
Okay, that was just last April or May, I believe.
Well, that's a long time for me. Yeah, so we took care of that as soon as we could. So, you know, we were on it before, before you called, we were already working on it, but it took a little while to get finalized.
Would you be able to confirm the extension of COVID hours? Tracy, I believe you reached out to our attorney, Mr. Attorney Lampke.
It's an extension of the premises application. It goes to the LA, you guys, and it goes to the ABCC. And it's just on record, they don't, they don't need to approve it because it's automatically approved by you.
Okay.
It's in April of 2024. Assuming that it's the same footprint, which it is, I have general map and everything, and shed is gone. That was released by the whole town because it was a shed there that didn't belong.
Okay. So I'm just going to repeat what you're saying because they, the chief can't hear what you're saying, Tracy, unless you want to come up. But we, the Town checked with Attorney Lampke, our attorney who advises us on licensing permits and confirmed that the COVID hour extension, the COVID extension was extended and that the process is first it goes before us, the local licensing authority, assuming that the premises that are being extended are the same. And then it goes to the ABCC and that app, and that remains on file with them. And so that's the information we have from Attorney Lampke. But your, your, you know, your points about the manager of record are well taken. Are there any issues, Chief, in terms of the manager of record that you want to, you know, based on this extension that you want to raise to us that we should consider, you know, based on sort of the back and forth here?
I just think that the Building Department needs to be part of this conversation. Last year, for lack of a better description, this shed was, was more or less like a tiki bar type.
Okay.
Structure that was not permitted, that had to be ordered, removed by the Building Department. It was never inspected. There was no inspectional services. There was extension cords and hoses running to it. So I, I just think that the Building Department, if there's going to be something, a repeat of that, you know, the Building Department has to be part of this conversation. It has to be properly permitted.
Yeah. So we're not quite sure it's properly permitted.
Well.
We've removed that shed, like I said, and it's not coming back. So that was with the guidance of the Building Department. So, you know, we, we, we heard what he said and then we removed the shed. So it's gone.
So Chief Quigley, just to give you some background, I will acknowledge that Lenny's wanted to come in for the, this extension and the Select Board declined to do so until they were in compliance from our Building Department's perspective. And our building inspector has reviewed the premises and is okay with the current.
With the shed.
With the shed gone now. So, you know, just to update you, we, we completely hear your concern on that point. So, all right. We've gone through the COVID hour extension, the manager of record, the shed being constructed and removed. Is there any further discussion that the board wants to have in light of this back and forth?
I was going to, and thank you for the clarification because, and thank you, Chief Quigley, for bringing that to the attention. And I was about to withdraw my, my motion, but I will not withdraw that because we, we have the confirmation that in fact the Building Department has said it's fine. But that's a good catch, Chief Quigley. Thank you.
No, I appreciate the board. I just want to make sure the board goes into the size wide open. And, you know, I was concerned that that shed was going to make a reappearance without permitting, but it sounds like it's been squared away and we'll take him at his word.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, do you want to make a motion subject to compliance with our building requirements, including no shed?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion subject to compliance of the Building Department.
Point of order. We have a motion on the floor that's made and seconded.
You have to withdraw.
I withdraw my motion.
Oh, that's made and seconded.
It's seconded. So you can't withdraw. So you have to make a motion to amend the original motion. We have to vote on that and then we have to make a new motion.
I would, I'd make a motion to amend the motion to make it subject to building approval, Building Department approval and confirmation by Chief Quigley. And I'd like to amend that emotion, as I just said.
So I'll second the amendment to the original motion.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 All right. Now we're voting on the amended motion.
Yes.
Okay. So all those in favor of the amended motion, please vote aye.
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 Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
So I'm, I guess I'm a little confused because the shed isn't coming back. So I guess we were okay? I guess I got a little.
Yes. Long story short, you are okay so long as you continue to follow the Town's requirements, including as to not having a shed that is not permitted. So that's a double negative. So don't have a shed that doesn't have a permit.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. We are now at Select Board Goals, which we, we laid out in part to start the discussion. I don't have a vote down here because I think we should have the full board here at this point. But to the extent that there was any, you know, if someone had a tweak in their notes or something like that, that we wanted to discuss, I thought it would make sense to get the discussion started right now so that way we can move forward. If not, then we'll just put this on for discussion and vote at the next meeting and move forward.
I would say, I have no problem. I think we should discuss it at the next meeting. It's a full board here.
I had, I had proposed a goal of really laying out Town, special Town Meeting and Town Meeting schedule and, and getting it, getting it scheduled and getting it published, working with the chairs of the other committees and the parties who would be presenting so that, and I think, I think it's a goal that we need to have to hold ourselves accountable to a smoother warrant process. And I'd like to see that on there.
And I think that, and Ellen, I hear you and I think we're all on the same page. And the question is just, has this captured it? And it sounds like maybe not, but with respect to capital and financial planning in the context of trying to lay out with all of the things that we want to move forward on for fall Town Meeting, the substantive projects, pursuing those, but also how we're going to do this. So we try to finalize the above projects with their respective committees by the end of August. We consult with our advisory committees in late August, early September. We hold public forums and engage in public outreach in September and October. And then we hold the Fall Town Meeting and election in mid-November. Is there something in addition you would like to add to that? Maybe like something else that we could do to, because I, I think people are open to it.
Well, I mean, the timelines that you just, oh, here it is. Consult with late August. I, I think it's neb, I think that's nebulous. And I don't think we can come up with a schedule now. I think we have to get the dates and, and remember our goals are for a year, not just for the fall.
Yeah. Agreed.
And, and so if we do a special Town Meeting and a Town Meeting, the Town Meeting warrant process was not easy either. And it will be a continuation of where we are at Special Town Meeting. And I think I personally feel a responsibility to our colleagues to let them know what our expectations are so they can lay out their work process and their workflow. And even if it's as simple as Goal Four, Special Town Meeting and Town Meeting warrant process devise specific schedule, I mean, we don't, we don't have to put the schedule in the goal. We just have to say what the goal is. It's to devise a specific schedule to all interested parties, presenting parties, whatever the wording is. And I can, I can do that so that we hold ourselves accountable to a smooth process. Smoother, as, as much as we can, we can do.
Okay. Okay. I think, I think what we were trying to do was put a lot of details around what we felt that process might be like for this upcoming Fall Town Meeting. But to your point, there's other articles out there in addition to what we have out here. And there's also obviously our annual Town Meeting. So, right. Okay. So for the next one, what I will do, if okay with you, Jack, is maybe we just add a goal, Goal Four, for, you know, devise.
I think if we're going to, if we're going to change this at all and make it official, we should do it with the whole board here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But to put it on there for discussion.
For discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For discussion.
I'll send, I'll send you language.
Okay.
Better articulated than what I said tonight.
Great. Okay.
Can I just make a recommendation, too?
Sure.
I think when we have the, have the discussion slash vote, it should be a separate document and not on the agenda specifically.
Yes, and I hear you. And I think we should do that. I think that why I thought it was important was that most people always public, they go to the agenda, which is very public and they know where to go.
Right, right.
Versus getting the entire packet. People don't have that accessible as easily and given the importance of these goals. So we can do both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should do both. A working document is easier for us to work with as we're working on it. But having the agenda beforehand so that public.
It's just for the public.
Because they do look at the agenda. They don't look at very much else. I'm quite honestly, I don't blame them frequently. But anyway, I think we're, we're good to go on this, as far as I'm concerned.
So we'll add, so you'll send me language and then we'll put that up for discussion with the full board. Okay?
Thank you.
Any, anyone out there, Justin, on, okay? All right. Okay, Mr. Senior, Town Manager update.
So first, the Elder Affairs received the grant for their new handicap accessible van. We're very excited.
Great.
It's going to be, I think, a while before we actually get something from the pipeline, but it's exciting. And we've been looking for this for a long time. So we just noticed some, many thanks to the staff and the Elder Affairs Board who worked really hard on this. And so it's going to be a great addition to the fleet to help transfer grants. So that's good news. The, and some other grants are processed, but we'll talk more about them in the coming weeks. Something that literally just broke this afternoon, Piping Clover Nest has been discovered on Sandy Beach. What that means.
Yeah, is that a good thing or?
Well, I mean, it's good, it's good for the piping clovers. What that means for large events at the beach, we do not yet know. So we will know in the next couple of days, I hope. We're going to be in touch tomorrow morning with the state and say, wow. So this literally happened today. So I, I, we're, we're always cautiously optimistic that it will be okay. And there's a whole, so we will be sorting through this. So I just, I just, I don't want anyone to be surprised. We literally just found out about this. We went to the Sandy Beach Facebook page, you'll see. Somebody took a picture of the sign and that's Audubon's been on site. They've already roped off an area. It's up in the, well, I think it's the northern corner of the beach, up in the rocks. So up, up the corner. So, so one nest, three eggs per.
So is this the Piping Clover's reserve of place for fireworks so early?
Yeah, I think they're hurt. I think they wanted some really prime seats. So, so again, I just, we don't know yet what it means. I mean, we do know that air that beach is off limits for, that's like a zone around. That said, how it will affect them, large events, the beach is undetermined. We will know.
Where exactly is the nest? Is it the beach house or?
Yeah, it's up in the corner, right?
It's the corner of Nichols and.
So the northern end. So the northern edge, the opposite. It's the opposite end of the.
Northern end, yeah.
Oh, the northern end.
So the northern edge.
Okay. It's on the opposite side, which is, okay.
Which is good in many ways because it's away from the entrance, it's away from the, it's away from the, the building and all that. So again, we'll, we will know more soon. That said, we're going to proceed with everything in place and figure things out, so.
Okay.
But if there's any changes, we'll be led to get them very quick to any events.
Okay, sounds good.
And that is, that is the, the good news and the uncertain news right now.
Um, I have a, a question for Mr. Senior, please. So that's awesome about the handicap van. Hey, Chris, I don't know if you remember, I don't know, three, four, five years ago, the school department got a van.
For moving handicap kids.
Yeah.
We, we worked really hard to try to find a way to share it and it has not really worked out. I remain perpetually open if they can figure out a way to share it.
Okay. So, so it's getting utilized?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't get reports on it, but they, I, I, I believe it's in use. But right, the schools had bought a van to, to be able to transport kids that needed it.
Right.
And.
Because the private livery service was so expensive.
Right.
Okay.
And, and it's fortunate, I don't think it's, it's used all the time.
A red van?
We, we, we're not going to work out a way to, to share it as much as.
Okay, thank you.
All right, select board comments. Mr. Creighton?
I just want to point out to everybody that the extension, Howard Gleason Road, which goes along from Atlantic Avenue, goes up past the yacht club and then goes up to Bellamy, has been getting a lot of fairly high-speed traffic. It's, it created a very hazardous situation. People, there's a, a lot of events at Bellamy and there's supposedly more planned, and people from Bellamy come down that road and, and they just shoot on out to Atlantic Avenue. People are coming up Atlantic Avenue and they don't know that it's, doesn't go anywhere and they shoot up there and they get frustrated, they turn around. Well, people should be aware that that is, the junior sailing program is up there. There's two or three boat sheds up there with a lot of equipment. And so Gleason Road is really kind of part of an, an operating educational boatyard. It's become very, very hazardous. You know, there's some talk about, and I hopefully will be able to get that done, putting some speed bumps in there, but in the meantime, I want everybody to be very, very careful when they drive up there. It is our, our town speed limit is 20, 25 miles an hour. It doesn't take high speed along there. There are a lot of kids, there are a lot of cars parking along there, there are boat trailers, there's people backing down, there's children coming down on their bicycles, very, very hazardous, and let's hope that we can slow it all down before we have an unfortunate accident. That's all I have to say.
I'd like to just give a quick shout out to the Cohasset High School Boys Lacrosse Team who won the state championship on Sunday, mother of a former boys lacrosse player. Yeah, I think they beat Sandwich, I want to say it was eight to four. So Cohasset has a longstanding rich history of success in, in boys and girls lacrosse. And to Mr. Creighton's earlier point, school is out, kids are on bikes, kids are walking everywhere, everybody, everywhere should just slow down and especially around places where kids are. The pool, I think, opened today or will open tomorrow. Little League is in full force, all the youth camps will, will be going, so everything will be there when we get there. You don't need to rush. And the, and everyone in town is looking forward to the fireworks. I'm hearing a lot of good, a lot of good buzz about it, so I think it's a great event to one of our goals. It's a great town event and the last time we had it there, it was pretty spectacular. So that's all I have.
And to follow on Ms. Mars' comments, I just wanted to thank our entire community for raising all of that money so quickly for the fireworks. That was really generous and, and great, and it will be an event that the entire community will enjoy, so, as well as a plover. So thank you to the community who has so generously donated their money, as well as those who have generously donated their time to make this happen as well. So thank you all. Now we're on to approval of minutes for June 6th, 2023, and June 13th, 2023. Any comments?
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of 6:00, 6:23, and 6:13, 23.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Are there any topics not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours? No, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, we are adjourned.